Okay, so welcome, everybody, to the Oakdale City Council. This is our regular meeting on December 14th, 2021. We're starting at a special time tonight, a six, six o'clock time because of the Truth in Taxation meeting. But at this point, Kathy, would you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Inga Britson.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Reinkie.
Here.
Councilmember Svedland?
Swedberg.
Swedberg?
Here.
So close. Councilmember Zabel.
Here.
Zabel. Sorry.
No, you're good.
Very good. Thank you. And I'm going to, before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, next thing, I wanted to welcome Kathy to official chair upon the, upon the dais and, and thank you for, for joining our team.
Thank you.
Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So first up on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. So in front of us, we have the agenda that has been amended from what we were given in our packets earlier. Upon review, councilors, do you see anything that you'd like to question or can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion, the second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is amended, agenda is approved, is noted. So first up on the docket, or the second up on the docket tonight is the Truth in Taxation meeting. So this is a public meeting and I will now open the public meeting, which is the Truth in Taxation meeting. And Finance Director Zimmerman, you're here, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you take the lead on the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight's meeting regarding Truth in Taxation is the final step in satisfying the city's statutory requirement related to the 2022 tax levy and budget. The presentation will cover many topics, including the funds with the General Fund, which is the city's largest fund, which has undergone kind of a remake through this budgetary process with the incorporation of the Communications and Broadcasting Fund and the Recreation Fund. So that consolidation's going to have an impact on the General Fund, which will be in the, in the presentation, but I want to note that to begin.
Bear with us just, just a moment here. So let me chit chat a little bit while you're doing that, because I also wanted to say welcome. We have a new member of our leadership team and our, our, our staff, and this is Kyle Stasia. I believe I'm pronouncing it properly. Is it Stasia?
Stasika, Mayor.
Stasika? Thank you.
Well, we're going to have to change our last names.
Kyle started with us in the Finance Department and he is our new accountant. So that's a, that's a great addition to the staff and I think will be a nice help for you, Jason.
Yep, agreed. Yes, Mayor, he'll, he's done a great job so far, so very, very excited to have him part of the team here, so.
So then too, for the people who are watching, who will be watching, this is a process, this budgeting process, and Jason, you'll touch on it again, I'm sure, too, but this is a process that really started in April. So when you think about a city and a community as large as we are, with the number of things that are going on with 28,000-plus people, residents, 11,500 households, the streets, the parks, the sewer water, the lights, the ballfields, the administration taking care of residents' needs is really significant.
Yeah.
There's got to be, what do we have, I'm sorry, Chris, eight departments, official departments?
Uh huh.
And so the process that has been done is the solicitation of comments, solicitation of a department needs to get the jobs done, get the services provided to the residents. And that's the piece that started in April. And as the months went on, the input from sometimes residents, input from ourselves, and just recommendations by each department head keeps on crystallizing that budget to where we are today. That's good.
It's not working. I've got no solution for you right now.
We have another cable?
I can see if we've got another cable, but.
We have access, I think.
Flash drive, we could put on that.
Again, for the people who may be watching, you're seeing that we have a technical issue and hopefully to be resolved shortly.
Technology doesn't work.
Been my day all day.
Do you have to do a presentation?
Been my year. But I have work to do and.
Well, I have had a year.
I was supposed to have my, both relations committee meeting today. And I just canceled it. I'm like, we're not meeting on Zoom.
Paul. One sec, gavel, bit of gavel.
One sec, gavel, bit of gavel.
Well, it's been here. It's 30 years old, probably.
Well, I'm willing to change.
Yeah, great.
What if that beat it back in 1870?
Okay.
Got it?
Yeah. When he comes back, just send present from this computer.
That would be so bad.
It happened, I'm sure. That's right here, but. I'm happy to jump in and make the presentation.
You could put it on.
I can talk about it all day long.
Yes, you can, Gavin, yes, you can.
Even well beyond, people want me to stop.
I think you should do it. So are you doing that?
Just go there, start making it up.
Are you leaving your trip after Christmas or?
Yeah, 26th through the 30th.
Yeah. That's a Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're back up and running, it looks like?
Yes.
Or we're up and running?
Yeah.
All right, sounds great. All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. With, with that, we can jump into the presentation here.
Can I say something? Please feel free to sit. Like, I know that's like a really short desk.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. It probably sound, picks up my voice a little bit better as well, so thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Catch my breath here and we can kind of begin here. So just to begin, some of the budgetary principles that the, the city operates under when considering a budget, a tax levy. Again, decisions acknowledge both short and long-term impacts, stabilization of revenues and expenditures, funding operations at an appropriate level, structural balance, and maintaining appropriate fund balance level, which we'll, we'll touch on additionally. Again, investments where it can provide significant return to the community, and then again, always seeking connections between resources and results. So a few definitions from a property tax, you know, market value, market value exclusion, so some of those concepts. So I think the top three are probably the most important when we talk about market value being the assessed value determined by the county's assessor's office. And again, market value is defined as the usual selling price at the time of assessment. Market value exclusion, we'll touch on that topic, but it is a component of calculating taxes. And then the net tax capacity then is the, the market value, the market value exclusion, and then that helps drive that net tax capacity. And again, we'll, we'll talk about that when we go through some sample calculations. So again, as, as the mayor touched on during the introduction, kind of a generic and very high-level property tax timeline. So it starts in January where the values, when we talk about the assessed values are established. So the values that are used for the 2022 property taxes are established in January of 2021. Those valuation notices are mailed out in February by the county. Property tax statements for the current year then are mailed out in March. May, the first half, taxes are due to the county. Then in September is when the first formal action by the city is required, when the preliminary levy is set by the city and all other taxing jurisdictions. Then in November, the second half, taxes are due for the current year, and then the proposed tax statements for, for the following year are then submitted by the, by the county to taxpayers. And that brings us to today, where we're discussing the final levies and having the Truth in Taxation meeting. So there's a number of reasons why property taxes change, and the first thing I, I want to mention to the right is that there's a common misnomer that decisions made by the council about tax dollars needed to deliver city services is the only driver of changes to taxpayers, when often there's a number of items noted there, such generally fluctuations in market value is a, is a large driver, but also things like fiscal disparities that's outside of the council's authority. There's levies at various jurisdictions, and we'll touch on a sample of a preliminary tax statement, but also things like the issuance of debt, special assessments, and voter-approved referendums can impact individuals' property taxes. So looking at 2022, the proposed levy this evening for council's consideration and some assessment highlights. So citywide values went up 3.5% from 2021, and the, the commercial values had the largest increase of any sector, 8.1%. The proposed levy this evening for, for council's approval is up at 5.99% from 2021. Again, this includes the assessed value increase, includes all of the city's operations, and this proposal is a 1% decrease from the preliminary levy that was mailed out in November by the county. The estimated median market value's at $264,300, and then the median residential property values increased over 68% since 2013, which is the second-largest in the county during this time span. So some proposed budget highlights. Again, the city's commitment to a city-operated police department, deployment of city-worn, or body-worn cameras, excuse me, the establishment of a public safety wellness program, and then an additional police investigator position. Also, in, in the public safety realm, the continued transition to a full-time firefighter EMT operating model with additional, three additional positions there. Also, the, the planning and inspection services related to the, the upcoming development on Willowbrook Gold Line and Forefront. Also, through this process, some of the actions taken by councils, the, the elimination of equipment-related debt by 2026, a fully funded capital improvement plan through 2026, the reduction of dependency on transfers from other funds for general city operations, and then also equitable compensation for all city staff. So next, we'll talk about some valuation changes and tax impacts. Looking at the, the changes from 2021 to 2022, again, it's a look back, so it's the, the year previous, that's the, the stage for the, for the subsequent year. When we look, not much growth from a parcel perspective in any of the groupings, residential, agricultural, commercial, or apartments. And again, when we look to the far right, we see the, the percent change overall in each one of those sectors. So agricultural had, had a large decrease, and again, that was with the rezoning of property in the, the proposed Willowbrook development. But generally, like we talked about, down in that commercial industrial area, that 8.1% increase from a secular standpoint had, had the largest increase. So this is kind of small, but it's, it's kind of a quick comparison of Washington County to the left and Oakdale to the right from a market value composition. So generally speaking, the pie roughly looks, looks the same, but you'll note the, the real lack of agricultural in, in the city of Oakdale compared to the, the rest of Washington County. And again, the, the rest of the components are roughly in the, the same, same percentage area. So then looking at the, the residential property assessed median market value trend, so again, this is the, the median value property in the city of Oakdale from 2017 to the, the preliminary 2022 numbers. So you'll note the, the beginning number or value at $221,100, and then falling in 2023 to 157,400. Again, important to remember that the, the lag in market values, so there's almost a, generally speaking, a two-year lag from when values are established to when taxes are paid. So that's a indicator of the economy decreasing at an earlier point, and then values in 2023 decreasing to that low point, and then now up to where we're at in 2022 at 264,300. So we'll, we'll keep going. So the, the Oakdale residential property assessed value changes, so this is overall residential properties in, in the bucket with which they've, they've increased or decreased. So you'll see most of the values did, did increase, or most of the properties, excuse me, increased between .1% and 5%. So there were some that decreased, that 1633 number between .1 and 5%, and then some, again, on the other side of the, the 5.1 to 10% increase. So this alone is, is good information, but then, again, important to do an analysis kind of county-wide. So the green value is, is the city of Oakdale, and the other column is, is, is Washington County. So you'll see roughly the same composition of increases and decreases, again, slightly smaller amount of increases in that .1 to .5%, slightly more in the .1 to, to 5% decrease, but generally, again, in, in the same ballpark. So then when we look at a, a single year, so we're looking from pay '21 to pay '22, we'll see Oakdale's, the median, the median value for residential property increasing at 2% or $5,300. So again, it's good to look at, at a single year, but I think it's, it's more powerful from an analysis from a long, longer perspective. So when we look from 2013 to 2022, we see that the, the city of Oakdale has the second-highest growth in, in resident median value growth, excuse me. So, and I think what's even more powerful than that is when we look at the, what's driven the market value increase. So we see some of the other communities, Hugo, Stillwater, Woodbury, with really significant residential growth from a number of units being built, which, which can, can really draw up the, the median value just with new, new housing stock, where the city of Oakdale's only experienced six additional proper, or residential properties during that time span. So it shows real appreciation and investment in the community, not just the, the value of homes increasing from new construction. And also from a cumulative standpoint, when we look at the, the 21, 2021 taxes on the median value residential property with, with these major cities at an urban tax rate, in, in Washington County, we can see Oakdale at $951, just slightly higher than Cottage Grove. But again, in, in the, the bottom half of the, of the chart here, and again, that's on the, the median value property in that community. So it's important to note, too, I did indicate at the beginning of each bar, the, the tax capacity rate. So again, it's important to note, tax capacity is a mathematical computation, it's not an indicator of financial responsibility or spending trends, it's really an output of market values and the levy need of the community. And then when we look at the 2021 taxes for all authorities, again, with the median value at $259,000, this property located in ISD 622 in the Valley Branch watershed district, again, the composition of, of taxes with the school district being the larger portion, Oakdale at 31.4%, Washington County at 22.4%, Valley Branch, and then the other taxing jurisdictions to the right there. So that's kind of the, the history, the assessed value trends, and then we'll, we'll continue to look at the, the proposed budget and then the proposed property tax levy. So the 10-year average annual levy increase with the proposals at 4.65%. And again, it's important to, to remember that increase includes additional public safety positions. And again, it's important to take a, a long-term view at levy increases and spending trends. Again, new positions are costly and what that means, and again, a, a long-term view at, from 2012 to the 2022 proposal of, of what that looks like. And again, these are the, the components of the levy, the operating being the General Fund, debt service, our capital projects, building, building maintenance, public safety, those, those types of, of areas. So then when we look at the, the General Fund revenues, again, as I noted previously, large increase from 2021 to 2022. And again, a big driver of this is the consolidation of funds. So previously in the 2021 budget, communications and broadcasting, which includes franchise fees, and also recreation was operated in, in their own funds, and the proposal this evening before council is to, to aggregate those funds into the General Fund. So again, the, there's an increase in revenue and spending, but it's not all just new spending, it is the addition of other funds. And then same thing here, and again, important to note from an expenditure standpoint, that more than half of the increase is related to public safety, and when we talk about public safety, we're talking about police, fire, and building inspections. So again, a, a large investment being brought forth to the council regarding, you know, police, fire, and, and building inspections. So with that, again, another large component of the city's levy is, is, is the debt. So kind of an, an interesting chart here, and again, showing the, kind of a longer-term view at, at the debt levy, where it's been and where we're at. So important to note, second consecutive year of a proposed debt levy decrease. As we noted earlier as well, no new debt anticipated for vehicles and equipment per the, the capital improvement plan. And again, this does support the continuation of the comprehensive street and improvement, reconstruction plan that'll be discussed later this evening as well. So it's not as if that that's being foregone, that it's being decreased, it's, it's to continue to support that as well. And then when we talked about vehicles and equipment being internally funded, so this is a, this chart outlines the equipment certificate debt outstanding by year, again, with that proposal by 2026, that that debt will be eliminated and be, be internally So the 2022 proposed levy allocation, so this is just trying to break down that monthly distribution of city taxes at about $82.49 on the median market value property. So police, public works, when we talk about public works, we're talking about parks, street maintenance, forestry, those types of operations, servicing our existing debt, which is predominantly used to finance our, our street improvement projects, then fire, and then we start talking more about administrative-type things, finance, HR, general government, community development. So again, to, to give some perspective about what's the distribution of tax dollars. So then starting to talk about the, the calculation of taxes, so again, median market value property for 2022 at $264,300. The, the market value exclusion, which I've got a slide on, establishes that market value. Residential homesteaded properties have a state class rate of 1%, which then makes that tax capacity of $2,508. The estimated tax rate at 39.47% then equals a $990 gross taxes paid. Again, that estimated referendum line has a zero in it, and it's important to note, school districts in some cities have a market value referendum that isn't part of their tax capacity calculation, but it's important to note that it's part of the comprehensive taxes paid to support that jurisdiction. So, so a couple slides to kind of break down the changes in, in taxes on that median property, so, or median valued residential property. So this slide is showing market value with no increase, so staying at $259,000 from '21 to '22, with the change in tax rate driving a $15.85 increases in, in taxes on this property. So again, this, this example with no market value change, just the change in the tax rate equates to a $15.85 increase from '21 to taxes payable in '22. Now, when we layer on top of it, the market value change, so we go from $259,000 to $264,300, the total increase is $38.35. So again, a portion of that is the change in the tax rate, and then the $22.50 is from a change in the value. Again, this, and again, this represents a $10.99 annual reduction from the preliminary levy which was used for the TNT notices. So we'll touch on that in a moment, but this is incorporating the, the proposal in front of council this evening on, on the median market value property. So this is getting back and touching on that. So in an effort to minimize the impact of property tax values, councils, or before councils, the proposal to take the following actions. One is to reduce the budget and necessary levy to support the employer-paid health benefits as the city's actual experience has been more favorable than expected. So it was at the preliminary levy budgeted higher than, than what was necessary to support the, the employee benefits. And then the other portion of this, as we talked about at the very beginning, is the use of fund balance. Again, will be a one-time reduction in, in the levy. So those two items together then equal a 5.99% increase compared to the preliminary levy of 6.99%. So the chart to the right of the text identifies the preliminary levy, the final levy, and then that change of $10.99 from the action being proposed to council this evening. So then when we look at the, the preliminary pay taxes for the residential property, we look at, at the preliminary levy at $1,001, and then when we look at the proposal this evening, it's down to $990. So this, this is showing the proposals based off the preliminary information that was supplied by the other taxing jurisdictions that we looked at earlier, so the larger communities in Washington County, showing the preliminary view, and again, the, the thousand one's the preliminary, and then the proposed is the 990 for council this evening. And then again, long-term view, not just looking at a one-year increase or a one-year change, looking at a comprehensive view of what's the actual taxes paid by the median property in each one of these communities. So moving on to the Truth in Taxation statement. So the snip to the right there, and I've, I've blocked out the property information, but I've, I've tried to pick a property that experienced roughly the same experience as what we phrase as the median, median property. So this, this property, slightly higher median value than, than the median, or slightly higher market value than the median, but roughly the, the same experience. So again, the TNT notice includes both estimated market value and taxable market value, and again, it's got the preliminary taxes for all jurisdictions. So this property, slightly higher median value than the median, or slightly higher market value than the median, but roughly the same experience. So again, the TNT notice includes both estimated market value and taxable market value. And again, it's got the preliminary taxes for all jurisdictions, so not necessarily what's being approved by each, but the preliminary. And again, it doesn't traditionally include the impacts of voter-approved referendums in the current year. Traditionally, those are done by school districts, but again, other taxing authorities do have some ability to do those referendums. So taking a look here, as I noted, this property is at $265,300, so slightly higher than the median. But again, when we look at this, it includes both the estimated market value and the taxable market value, and this property is within $900 of the median value of that median for the 2022 taxes. So when we talk about market value exclusion, it's 40% of the property value up to $76,000, and then it's phased out at 9% for values over $76,000. So when we look at the estimated, or the estimated market value for the sample property, again, we're not talking about the median, we're talking about the sample for this notice, it's an increase of $6,900. So the homestead market value reduction is $600, which results in a $2.37 tax impact or a 5.56% increase of the overall city increase is really just from a reduction of the market value exclusion. So I just point this out because it's an important concept that as exclusions and other things are phased out, it does have an impact to property taxpayers. So when we look year over year on this truth and taxation statement for this property, it includes the preliminary taxes for each jurisdiction. Again, the levies can be reduced, but they cannot be increased. So again, the TNT notice includes the tax information and budget meeting, location dates and times for each one of the taxing jurisdictions and for this property. And then the overall change for the preliminary taxes on this property is a $95 increase or 3.1% increase. So it's important to note, the bottom line is a composition of all taxing jurisdictions. It's not just the city, not just the county, it's all combined. And when we look at the city portion on this preliminary statement, it's 5.9%. But again, what's important to note is that it's a preliminary number. So what's before council this evening is a reduction from that, and I'll touch on that in a minute. But no new statements are generated, nothing new is sent out to the property taxpayers saying that there's been a change until the actual taxes are certified and distributed in 2022. So walking through the sample property and the action before council this evening, again, the TNT notice had $1,005.21 tax for this property. By reducing the levy, it'll take the total taxes to $994.18 or a 4.8% increase over 2021. So again, what I've tried to walk through here on this property is the preliminary levy of $1,005, what's before council this evening at $994, and again, that change of about $11 from the preliminary to final. And then finally, there's a few specific property tax relief programs that are made available by the state that I think are important for the community to know about. So the state of Minnesota has two programs available for homestead property owners and for those in rent, that are rentals. There's a lot of different rules to apply, values, amounts paid, income thresholds, things like that. So again, the link at the bottom of the page provides all the comprehensive information, where to go to file those returns, and again, additional rules. What's on the page is just kind of high-level snippet of those rules. And then another program that's kind of gained steam, I think, in the last few years is the senior citizen property tax deferral program. So same thing, lots of rules, household income limits, different things like that, liens on properties, things like that that are important to know. But again, ability for seniors to reduce their current liability for taxes. Again, there then is a future payment at the time that the property is sold. But again, lots of rules and regulations. The link at the bottom of the page can kind of identify how to apply for the program and then some additional rules as well. So with that, essentially, that's the conduction of the presentation. So the action items tonight is to conclude the truth and taxation meeting, allow for public input and comments, and then before the council this evening is the resolution to approve the 2022 property tax levy, and then the general fund, special revenue fund, enterprise fund budgets. And then additionally, in the packet is the resolution for the approval of the capital improvement program as well. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you and stand for any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. And just, I want to just talk about the process again tonight. So right now, we started this meeting at 6:00, shortly after 6:00 for the truth and taxation meeting. That included me opening that special portion called the truth and taxation meeting. The second step was the finance director giving this presentation, as he just concluded. The third step is going to allow me to ask for a public comment. Anybody that's here can come up to the podium and state their name and address, share the thoughts. When people are done doing that, I'm going to close the public meeting, and then I'm going to move towards opening up the regular meeting. At the regular meeting, then, we'll take action on the various budget proposals in front of us. So let's move into the piece that allows people to make public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this budget or any of the information that Director Zimmerman shared tonight, please come up to the podium, please state your name and address, and then share with us your thoughts. Is there anybody that would like to share your thoughts? And then finally, is there anybody in the audience who would like to share your thoughts about the truth and taxation material that was just presented tonight? Seeing none, I'm going to close the truth and taxation meeting, and I'm going to move to open up the regular meeting. On our agenda, we show that we have a spot for the approval of the agenda. We've already done that. So I'm going to move right into the next portion, which is the approval of the 2022 property tax levy and the 2022 general fund, special revenue fund, and the enterprise fund budget. Counselors, do you have any questions of Director Zimmerman before we take any actions? Jason, any final thoughts about the first action that we're about to take?
Nothing specifically. Again, just appreciate the opportunity to provide the information and be part of the process.
Thank you. Can I have a motion then, please?
Is it, is it all of it, or just?
Just A.
Well, I mean, but that first part of my group in the property tax levy.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 property tax levy and 2022 general fund, special revenue fund, and enterprise fund budget. Waive reading and adopt resolution 2021, adopting the 2022 property tax levy and 2022 general fund, special revenue fund, and enterprise fund budgets.
Here's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented. Thank you. The second action tonight is dealing with the 2022 through 2026 capital improvement program. Any questions or, any questions for Director Zimmerman? And can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2021, approving the fiscal policy reflected in the 2022 to 2026 capital improvement program, adopting the 2022 to 2026 capital improvement program, and initiating the 2022 projects.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented. Thank you. We're going to move into the next. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
And then also, just publicly, let me thank all the department heads and the management staff and the employees that have been working on this. There was a couple of challenges placed in front of you to enact in this budget, and they were accomplished. So thank you. Next time on the agenda here is a public hearing. We've got a couple of minutes before 7:00. This is dealing with a liquor license, so I'm going to wait until 7:00 to take action on that. You know what, Chris, I should say, as a city administrator, also responsible for the overall budget and that process, you did a marvelous job, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, thank you, council, for your support and guidance through this process. You were along with, on the ride with us every step of the way, but Director, Finance Director Zimmerman, who just left the room, did, really did the yeoman's work on this. So he revamped the process, he moved things around, as he mentioned, he consolidated things, he kept communicating with everybody, he did a really good job. And then that rest of directors kept reviewing things and helping, so thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Very good. So let's skip to the next item on the agenda, which is dealing with approving of the minutes. So in front of us, we've got three minutes, one from the workshop on October 12th, one from the regular meeting on November 23rd, and one from the special workshop on November 30th. Taking that first one, first workshop, meeting minutes first, from October 12th. Upon review, did you have any comments? Were there any comments about the October 12th meeting minutes? Could I have a motion, please?
No moves.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting minutes are approved as presented. Second set of meeting minutes deals with our regular meeting from November 23rd, 2021. Upon review, were there any questions or clarifications necessary? Could I have a motion then, please?
No moves.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Finally, we have meeting minutes from our special workshop of the Oakdale City Council from November 30th, 2021. Upon review, were there any questions or clarifications?
Mayor, I was not present, so I will be abstaining.
Very good. Anything else? Can I have a motion then, please?
No moves.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With one abstentation. Abstentation?
Abstention?
Abstention. There's an expertise in there.
By Councilmember Inger Britson. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is time for our open forum. Open forum is time when anybody that's in the audience who wants to comment on anything that's typically not on the agenda, but I think we've been generally in support of saying just comment on anything can do so. If you have an idea, a thought, a concern, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and then share with us your comment. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment during open forum? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the next topic, which is our consensus motions. There are quite a few of them in front of us tonight. So our consensus motions are A through T. Upon review, counselors, were there any that you'd like to pull for further discussion or consideration?
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask the city administrator a question? Did all those tweaks get made that we had talked about? I'm sure they're all right here, but I'll take your word for it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There were just some numbers that got flip-flopped, and they all got cleaned up?
They're all, yes, they're all posted correctly on the website right now.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Zabul?
Nope.
So can I have a motion then for consensus items A through T?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through T as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the consensus motions are approved as presented. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the staff reports, and tonight we have our Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Bachmeyer, to present our 2022 street improvement project. Hi, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we are just presenting the feasibility report for the 2022 street improvement program. It was included in your packet. This was initiated by the council, authorized by the council to proceed with the feasibility report. Generally, the objectives of our project are to improve safety, maintain maintenance costs, and do the streets that are in poor condition and financially feasible. So we have done that evaluation. We've also provided information through a virtual open house for residents that were affected by the project, and then also sent out some mailings to the affected property owners. But with that, I just do a quick PowerPoint presentation, just to kind of generally show for 2022, we have two areas that we're going to be looking at. One is Anna's Grove, which is the neighborhood that is just south of the railroad tracks east of, west of Ideal Avenue, right in this area, generally is 31st Street and all the associated cul-de-sacs that come off that area. This neighborhood was developed in 1996. Most of the homes were built between '96 and '98, so the streets in that area are 26 years old. The other area that we're looking at is Forest Street, east of Helmo Avenue to Inwood Avenue, and including Imperial, Oak Marsh Drive, which is just to the north of Forest Street, and also Third Street to the south and to the Oakdale Village area. Between these areas, it's a little over two miles, and generally, we do about between two to three miles a year in our annual program. Again, the objectives, primarily safety through improved pavement conditions and lighting, also to control maintenance costs by improving the pavement conditions. Patching is very inefficient and ineffective. We can't really improve the pavement conditions by merely patching, so it's to the point where we need to repave these streets. Also, we want to make sure that we're avoiding service barriers to delivery into these neighborhoods. If we don't reconstruct these streets at some point, we have to post them in the spring of the year, so load limits start limiting what can be done in those areas if people have things delivered to their homes or improvements done to their homes. They may have a period of, from March till May, where that would be difficult to do. And then the fourth item this year is, on Forest Street, we are looking at converting that from a rural section into an urban section with curb and gutter, storm sewer, street lighting, and also some turn lane improvements to accommodate access, improve access to the abutting properties on either side of Forest Street. This is our annual program that's reflected in our CIP. Jason touched on it earlier tonight, but a five-year program. Again, we generally do two to three miles a year, and you can see the areas in red that we're looking at for 2022, and then 2023 and beyond, we're going to be doing similar projects in other neighborhoods throughout the city. And again, it's primarily pavement conditions based on age. The proposed improvements is reflected in the feasibility report as it relates to Anna's Grove, pavement rehab. Basically, we grind up and repave the street. We also look at improving the lighting system in that area. Currently, it's high-pressure sodium. We're upgrading that to LED lighting, so it's replacement of the fixtures to improve the lighting levels and also the efficiency of the system. Any underground utility repairs that need to be made, we're televising the storm sewer, sanitary sewer. We're also reviewing all our maintenance records as it relates to water and hydrants to see if any work needs to be done. We're also looking at inspecting the sediment ponds that are out there to make sure that they're cleaned out as part of this process, too. And then also evaluating the street signs to make sure that they have the proper size and reflectivity that's required. In regards to Forest Street, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at widening to accommodate a center-left turn lane down the middle of the roadway, similar to what we have on Helmo Avenue from Fourth up to 10th. That provides access to the abutting owners, so vehicles that are turning left can get out of the through lanes. We're also looking at if there's some right turn lanes that may be appropriate into the Skanel Development, which is south of Helmo, excuse me, south of Forest Street, east of Helmo Avenue. So we'll be looking at that as well. Again, converting it from a rural to an urban section with curb and gutter and storm sewer, street lighting, there is currently no lighting along Forest Street down in that area, so we're looking at including lightning, lighting, and then also trail resurfacing. The existing trail that's down there is over 20 years old and in poor condition, so we're also including the resurfacing of that trail. Imperial Avenue and Oak Marsh, which is north of Forest Street, similar to Anna's Grove, will rehab the pavement. We'll also look at removing the former cul-de-sacs that were in those two areas. At one time, that was a, that wasn't a continuation, you couldn't get through there, there were just two cul-de-sacs, but that street was extended between the two cul-de-sacs, so we're going to remove those surplus or excessive pavement areas now that we're redoing the pavement. And then also, street light replacement, again, upgrading that to LED lighting. And then also, street light replacement, again, upgrading that to LED lighting. And then on Third Street, south of Fourth Street, over to Inwood Avenue, we are proposing a mill and overlay in that area. That was developed about 19 years ago. It is our commercial area, a very nice commercial area, and so we want to make sure that the pavement conditions are appropriate for that area. This just gives you a general idea of the streets that we're looking at redoing. This is in Anna's Grove. You can see the amount of patching that we've done, year to year, different colors. We come back annually and have to patch over and over again, and you can see the, the cracking is still extensive out there. This is Fourth Street, looking east of Helmo Avenue. You can see the amount of patching that we've had to do down there. And then, again, this is a rural section with gravel and paved shoulders, and we're looking at putting in curb and gutter and storm sewer and lighting improvements. This is Imperial Avenue, looking north towards the Oakmarsh Golf Course off of Fourth Street. Again, you can see the pavement conditions and the lighting that's out there that would be replaced. Just some general concepts of the area and the lighting that we're going to be upgrading in the neighborhood. And this is on Fourth Street, so you can see the curb and gutter, storm sewer, and the lighting that's going in there, and the trail resurfacing. The, the one thing I will add, the overlay of Fourth Street from Third to Inwood is not included in the feasibility because it is not assessed. That is something that's covered with state aid. And so, that will be included in the public improvements that we'll be bringing back to you in March, but it's not part of the feasibility or the public hearing. This was just a typical section showing how Fourth Street will be widened. It will be generally widened to the south. There is additional, there is available right-of-way to the south, so the street would be widened to the south, not getting any closer to the residential development in the corner of Fourth and Helmo. Again, just the process, we did provide all the information in November to the, the affected property owners in Anna's Grove. The feasibility report is being presented tonight. We're asking the council to accept the report and call for the hearing, which would be held on January 25th of 2022. If the council then orders the project, plans would be brought back to the council for approval on March 22nd of 2022, and we would go to bid and award a contract then in late April, so that construction could start in May and be completed by the end of August. Project financing, it's about a $4.7 million project, about $940,000 is specially assessed, which is about 20% of the project cost. The lion's share of the Fourth Street improvements will be financed through our state aid, our gas tax funds that we get from the state, about 2.2 million. Utility reserves and CIP funds, and also general improvement bonds. And these numbers compare very closely to what was reflected in the CIP. I think it was around 3%, so very close. The council action requested, again, is to accept the report, authorize the preparation of plans, and then call for the hearing. With that, I'd stand for any questions that council may have.
Very good. Thank you, Brian.
Welcome.
Counselors, anything for Brian? Very good, then. Counselors, can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number 2021, accepting the feasibility report, authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications, and calling for the improvement and assessment hearings on January 25th, 2022.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion in the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented. We have a little bit of time here before seven o'clock, so I'm going to keep on going, and then we can go back to the public hearing for the liquor license. So, next up on the agenda is time with our city attorney, Mr. Thompson. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, nothing specific to report. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Counselors, anything for Jim? Okay. Next up on the agenda, then, is time with our city administrator, Ms. Volkers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. You have another item under administrative, administrative report we can talk about real quick and continue it if we have to, if you have to break for the seven o'clock public hearing. We have a requested donation, or a voluntary donation to the city by Jean Thurmer, who is not an Oakdale resident, but a resident in the area who has used a lot of the Oakdale parks. And she is, is settling her estate to some extent before she has to settle the estate. And we were contacted by her power of attorney, her cousin, and he has offered the donation to us. It is an unusual donation, six cemetery plots in Union Cemetery in Maplewood. And Ms. Thurman would like, or Thurmer, excuse me, would like the city of Oakdale to consider accepting it. There would be a $100 fee to transfer the title of those lots. The city attorney is here if they have any specific questions about the legality and the steps. We do not believe there would be any further work beyond what we usually do to sell assets for the city. It would require a two-thirds vote. The cemetery is estimating each lot would be about $1,800 in value. We are estimating to you $1,200 to be safe. So, it would net the city approximately 7,200 minus the $100 transfer fees, is what we're thinking. We would intend on posting the lots for sale and then with a minimum bid, so we would recover those costs, and the donation would be then allocated to parks in Oakdale, is our recommendation. So, I will stand for any questions with, regarding that. I will try to answer the questions with the city attorney who's here, and he can try to. So, thank you.
Very good. This is the first time ever, we've ever had a chance to talk about something like this. So, counselors, any questions for Chris or City Attorney Thompson?
Despite there being no questions, I'll see if I can complicate this for you. No. One of the questions that Chris asked me earlier today, I just cut back on, was whether this is considered real or personal property. I believe it's considered real property. That by itself doesn't matter too much. It's just a different way of transacting it. You have, you have to sell for fair market value, but we have to do that anyway, so it could complicate it. So, putting all that aside, the uniqueness about this gift isn't so much the nature of it. It's most gifts you get and you keep, right? They give you money, they give you things. You keep them and use them for whatever purpose the donor wants you to. This one, you're getting and you will be selling and using the proceeds as the gift. So, that's really the unusual thing about this. And so, whatever the cost would be, I'm assuming the net would be what the ultimate donation would be. So, that's the main thing I wanted to point out, is it's, it's unique in that way, and maybe, maybe the nature of it's also unique. But, anyway, that's, that's clearly what I just wanted to highlight for you.
Where is the cemetery?
In Maplewood.
Maplewood.
Mm-hmm.
Since it's real property, would there be taxes associated with it that we're responsible for every year? Or is it a cemetery that's no tax?
I, yeah, well, when you say tax, I don't think--
Real estate tax?
Yeah. No, there's, there wouldn't, I, I'm accepting as their representation that it only costs $100 to get this transferred. I have not done any independent, you know, examination of that.
And from city-owned, on city-owned property, we are exempt from--
We don't pay taxes anyway. But--
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, we don't pay tax. Oh, no, we don't pay taxes on it. Whether the donor has to pay some tax on it, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Counselors, what do you think on this? Unique, but I'm, I'm supportive of it. Keep going, Counselor Zabel. What's your thoughts, sir? No questions?
No need to. Yeah, I'm good. Just not comfortable with it, so.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment?
What about that one question that came up on, on Monday, Chris, about the giving it inspection done, or? An appraisal. Yeah, appraisal, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Jim, you said we would have to do a for, fair market value appraisal like we would do with any property that we were, or asset that we would sell by just doing the fair market value. Would we need an appraisal?
No. The only, the requirement is that you sell it, with some exceptions. You have to sell it for fair market value, but that doesn't need you meet to be an appraise. You don't need to have an appraise of the term in fair market value, any reasonable way of, for example, if you went out for bid and you were awarded, gave it the highest bidder, that would probably be a fair price. Okay? When we're talking, and these are so, the value is so small, it's not going to trigger competitive bidding anyway, because the threshold is so high. So, you know, Chris asked a question about closing costs. Closing costs, you don't, I mean, you go through closing when you do a normal transaction. I don't think this would involve any closing costs. So, so, I, I don't see anything that makes it, the fact that it's real property, a reason not to do it, as composed to if it was personal property. I don't, I don't think there's a distinction there that would matter. It's, it's just more, how much are you going to get for this? And, you know, would it be simpler if they sold it themselves and gave you the proceeds? Probably, but that's not what they're asking, so.
Thank you. Chris, do you have an opinion on?
Oh, no, I do not have--
Yeah.
Okay, counselors, what do you want to do? Councilmember Swedberg?
I think it's very nice that they're asking us, and I think it's a nice gesture, but I'm going to be voting no, because I just don't feel comfortable, and I don't want to take up resources and have to worry about selling the lot. There's a lot of stipulations with the selling the lots, and so, I'm just, I'm not, don't want to seem ungrateful, because I am grateful, but at the same time, I'm just letting everyone know I'm voting no.
Counselors, anything else? Could I have a motion, then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2021, accepting a donation from Jean Thurmer of Cemetery Lots, located at Union Cemetery, and direct staff to proceed with the process. I didn't need to read that, did I? Yeah. And direct staff to proceed with the process to sell the property.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion in the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So, record-keeping, Councilmember Zabel and Councilmember Swedberg voted no. So, the motion passes, three to--
Nope.
No.
Fails.
No, it doesn't pass.
Requires two-thirds.
Oh, two-thirds. I'm sorry. So, the motion does not pass because of the requirement for a two-thirds vote.
Right.
I think, as Councilmember Swedberg stated, the notion of this, the, the request itself is not taken lightly--
No.
--and, and appreciated, and then we've got the action that the council has taken. So, thank you. It is just a little bit past seven o'clock, so I'm going to go up and open up the public hearing that we shot before. So, it, part of our process is to establish a time for public hearings, so people can attend and, and partake as necessary. So, this one is dealing with the Lor Enterprises, L-O-R Enterprises, doing business as Double Shot Liquor. This is regarding an off-sale intoxication liquor license. So, I'm now going to open the public hearing to comments from the audience. Is there anybody here that would like to comment on this liquor license? One more time, is there anybody here that would like to comment on this, this liquor license? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back up front, counselors, for, for discussion. Counselors, anything? Any questions for Jim, or police, or City Administrator Volkers? Could I have a motion, then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of an off-sale intoxicating liquor license to Lor Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Double Shots Liquor, located at 1021 Helmo Avenue, license to expire March 31st, 2022.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion in the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. I'm going to go back to the end of the agenda, where we have council presentations. It is my honor to, to do one, and this is the presentation of the 2021 Volunteer of the Year, and truly, it is, it is quite an honor. So, Sue Berry has worked for the city of Oakdale over 40 years. In that time, she has become so valuable to staff, city council, and her residents alike. Everyone enjoys working with Sue. Last year, she played a significant role in organizing and implementing a more formal process for evaluating residents' gardens for the Acorn Award. Much of this was done on her own time. She continually goes out of her way to help everyone, well beyond what is required by anyone. Sue is willing to come in, drop off, or send something out for anyone that asks. She assists frequently, again, in much of this on her own time. In all the years serving the citizens of Oakdale and working alongside the council and city staff, we have never observed Sue speak ill or complain about anybody. She just goes about her business and gets things done, and always, always with a pleasant demeanor. So, Sue initiates projects without being asked. For example, recently, she worked on several policies, ordinances that were new or needed significant rewrites, rewrites. She investigated them and brought forth draft poll, draft proposals to city staff and council to help them make more informed decisions. Sue's vast knowledge will be missed as she goes into retirement, January 4th, 2022. Anyone, be it a resident, staff, or council member, can contact Sue and frequently, and frequently does so, and she can remember something that happened 15, 20, even 30 years ago. Also, Sue can fill in gaps as to why we did something, so we have a better understanding of the situation back then. The history and knowledge Sue has of Oakdale can never be duplicated. Many of us rely on Sue for so many things. She's a quiet leader and is, and has a kind heart. Sue's attributes are just too numerous to list, but no, she has many, many positive attributes. In summary, there will be never, there will never be another Sue Berry, and we want to thank her for all the years of service and dedication to Oakdale. We will, we will, we wish nothing but the best for you, Sue, in your next adventure and chapter of life. You will be missed. So, with the Volunteer of the Year on the screen, we have the nice-looking plaque, and it just acknowledges Sue Berry as 2021 Volunteer of the Year, and then the council members and myself were able to sign it, or, that's cool. So, thank you very much. Counselors, anything else in council presentations that you'd like to say?
I just, I just kind of want to branch off of that and say that I have never worked with anyone in my life who has gone more above and beyond their direct responsibilities than Sue Berry, and I just, we're going to miss you, Sue.
You're here. Anything else, then?
I got one. I had a few resident compliments for Public Works for the way they handled the, the snowfall on Friday?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
They were very appreciative, appreciative of it, so our heads go off to Public Works.
Certainly. Share that with the crew tomorrow morning. Thank you.
My neighbor said that.
Goes without saying, yep.
And there was a comment that came in by email for me, that they're a resident of a neighboring city, and they were surprised that their streets hadn't been cleared yet while ours were very, very clean. Going, another attribute to, to you and your staff and the guys and the gals that were running the, running the equipment. Did a wonderful job. Anything else?
I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Yep.
Be safe, but have fun.
On our agenda, we have one more, two more actions. One is the approval of the summary of claims. So, in front of us, we have the claims from November 20th, 2021, through December 10th, 2021, in the amount of $909,049.94. Upon review, counselors, did anything pop out at you that you want more information on, or any questions about? Could I have a motion, then, please?
Motion to approve claims is presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion in the second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those claims are approved as presented. So, keying off of our Councilmember Swedberg, I want to also say that on behalf of all of us at the city, we want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holidays, and